Wesley.
Wednesday, February 11th, the United States. The Intergovernmental Republican Party, one nation, America, individual, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, let the roll call show. All board members are present and Eric Minx is joining us via Zoom. We do have a couple of people signed up for some comments. If you want to come forward now, I understand that you wanted to come together. It's Jasmine and Christina, correct?
Yep, I'm Christina.
Welcome.
I'm Jasmine.
Hi.
I, uh, thank you for having us here.
I'm gonna just review the rules for the comments, just to go over that quick. Please keep all comments to three minutes or less. Due to data privacy, please don't use people's names in the comments, in your comments. Your comments will not be addressed during this meeting, but the superintendent will contact you at a later date. Complaints about district personnel should be directed to their immediate supervisor. Unresolved complaints should be directed to the superintendent's office, so, all right?
All right.
All right.
Well, hello, my name is Christina. I'm the mother of five children, two who have attended the Princeton School District. I'm also the founder of the Facebook advocacy group Anti-Bullying Club. Thank you for having me here. Imagine being a teenager walking down a crowded hallway to your science class when suddenly a group walks up behind, one of them tripping you. As you stumble on the floor, the leader of that group kneels down and says, "Why don't you just go off yourself?" Killing himself, and walks away laughing. I bet that teenager, as that teenager, you feel hurt and angry. After all, what did you do to deserve that treatment? This and other hateful remarks and actions were used against my son while attending Princeton Middle School. His self-esteem declined, academic achievement suffered, and he dreaded coming to school in fear of being threatened and ridiculed. Here are some statistics regarding bullying. According to the CDC, one in five students reported being bullied in school last year. Forty-one percent of students who reported being bullied at school indicated that they think that bullying would happen again. Also, the Centers for Disease Control states that students who experience bullying are at increased risk for depression, anxiety, sleep difficulties, lower academic achievement, and dropping out of school. A real eye-opener I found was that bullying victims are between two to five, nine times more likely to consider suicide than non-victims, according to studies by Yale University. These children are future, future law enforcement, future teachers, caregivers, and what they witness and experience now in schools shapes their future. As educators and parents, how do we put a stop to this bullying? I recommend, strongly recommend, that the Princeton School District implements a social and emotional learning program for both students and teachers. This program will offer activities, interactive lessons, and skits to help increase social and emotional skills. This cost-effective program, which has been utilized in K through 12 schools across the United States, has been proven to improve emotional well-being, self-regulation, classroom relationships, and increase kind and helpful behavior among students. I also suggest that you create an after-school program for students to help advocate against bullying. In this program, the leader would develop mock scenarios around bullying and create discussion by reflecting on how they would handle the situation. This class could be a place where students could collaborate to develop a more inclusive environment through education and awareness. That's all I have. I thank you guys.
Thank you very much.
Hello, my name is Jasmine. I attended the Princeton School District from 10th to 12th grade, along with my brother, who is no longer enrolled in Princeton. My brother is currently a middle schooler in the 7th grade. I'm also proud to serve as a co-founder of the Facebook advocacy group Anti-Bullying Club. Thank you for allowing me to speak here today. According to the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, CDC, in 2023, statistics show that reports of bullying are most common in middle schools, accounting for 28%. High schools follow closely behind with 16%, while combined, schools and primary schools report rates of 12% and 9%. Similarly, cyberbullying reports exhibit a similar trend, with middle schools at the highest percentage of 33%, followed closely by high schools at 30%. Combined schools and primary schools account for 20% and 5%. During my brother's time attending the Princeton School District, he unfortunately faced various forms of bullying, including, but not limited to, physical aggression such as pushing, derogatory name-calling such as fat and ugly, verbal abuse, including the appalling suggestion of self-harm, and relentless mockery of his appearance and attire. These relentless acts of torment severely impacted his self-confidence and hindered his productivity. There were occasions when he found it immensely challenging to gather the strength to get out of bed in the morning. His academic performance suffered significantly as a result, and his relationships with his peers at schools deteriorated. It is critical to acknowledge that my brother never deserved such treatment from his classmates. In truth, he never gave them any reason to subject him to such torment. As responsible adults, we must collectively reflect on and question the underlying causes of bullying. Moreover, we must address the disheartening reality that middle schoolers bear the greatest burden when it comes to this issue. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have your contact information before I can do that on the sheet?
Yes.
All right, we will move on to our board member committee reports, and we will start the chat. Melissa?
I had the pleasure of attending the 8th grade parent night with Ms. Swanson, and we were talking to any of the incoming 8th grade, or incoming 9th grade parents about the career academies, and there was a lot of excitement through that, so that was pretty, that was fun. I also was a Tiger Connections Wellness Committee, and I was able to attend the lunch at the high school, a different one than Ben did, same day, and ten out of ten. It was so good. Yeah, I had tacos, street tacos, and where else did I have? And chips and guac, and some little agua fresca, little raspberry drink. And the pretzel. Oh, God, that looks so good. I didn't get to eat the pretzel, but she knows. I was very impressed. These kids can like cook. I mean, I'd pay for real to go. And then also, I had a couple of, or just an exciting update kind of thing with some math. So for the first graders, there's a kind of a group of first graders that have some advanced math scores, and Sam Heike had always wanted to do something for that group, but she is one person working across the district. So with the help of some of our parent volunteers, myself included, I can actually say I'm going to teach an advanced math course. For first graders. The point is, and I was like, are there answers? Anyway, it's a little bit embarrassing, but yes, there are answers in the back of the book, so I'm pretty excited. The kids seem really excited. It's all, it's the same B math program that they use throughout the district, but it's just the first grade, and she just hasn't had anyone to be able to implement it, so I'm pretty excited.
That's all. Dawn?
I have agenda planning, and there's a lot of state tournaments and playoffs happening, so wishing everyone well there. Was at the robotics tournament this past weekend. At high school level, we took home sportsmanship for one team. Middle school, we took home energy, and at intermediate, we took home judges award, so all the teams did well, and the competition is very tight there. So there was lots, lots of teams, lots of teams.
Eric?
I didn't do anything nearly as fun as them.
That's fun.
I did attend state. Just as a side note, the Princeton Flyer beat my grandson. It was like, who the fuck? It's really great to see all these people move on into, to all the state levels and the sections.
Eric Minx, got anything for us?
Other than going to Alligator World, I did do finance over Zoom.
All right, thank you. I attended the wellness committee meeting, and one thing to note is that we talked a lot about a farm-to-table, starting that in here in Princeton, so the board will be hearing more about that, I'm sure, in the future, and I had agenda planning and finance. Student council.
Yes, so it's officially March now, so now we're starting Women's National History Month, so we've been writing some blurbs, and we've been kind of talking about it in the morning. We also have a bulletin board in the library that kind of touches based on some very important women figures. It is the Swan Drive this month as well, March 11th through the 22nd, so there's a box outside of the front office in the high school, and it's just basically a box collecting stuff that we either need or like want, so like hygiene items, like all that kind of stuff, school supplies, all that kind of stuff. And then this week, at the end of the week, it'll be the end of trimester three, so it's finals week and that kind of thing, so it's a very hectic week, and registration is supposed to open next week, what we hear anyways, but that's not confirmed.
And then obviously, state for swimming robotics and wrestling, it all went well, so props to them. March 8th is the free community movie night in the pack, so those of you all ages, so little ones, older ones, I think it's trolls. And then All City Concert is next week on the 15th, 7:30 in the Tiger Gym. You'll see all the way from 4th to 12th grade, I believe. It only gets better, so it starts with 4th. But yeah, that's, that's all we have.
All right, thank you. Superintendent reporting.
As you all know, we're an organization of student learning, right? That's what it's all about, but also I just want to acknowledge the remarks that we have from public comment tonight is to reinforce our commitment to ensuring that our students feel safe and respected when we come into our school, right? We're here for learning, but we need to have the conditions for learning to take place, and we need to be diligent and steadfast in our work to ensure that every student feels safe, respected, like they belong, a place that's free of discrimination and racism, and that's, that's an ongoing effort that we just need to continue to work on. We've made some strong steps over the past, but we know that there's lots more that we need to do. We are in the human being business. We work with people, and we need to help students learn from their mistakes, treat others with dignity and respect, to prepare them to be contributing adults when they leave our school. And that's something that we just need to continue to work on. I look forward to reaching out and meeting with our public comment folks tomorrow or the next day. Want to acknowledge our team members. We're in March, right? It's a tough job that everybody has. We're probably one of the largest employers, if not the largest employer in the, in the area. We have some incredible team members that it's their life's work to make a difference in the lives of our students, right? And, and we all know that there's lots of challenges that they have, and we, anybody that's been in education for a long time know that there's a real grind coming up, right, in March, April, and May, and we just all have to band together and stay together to persevere through future adversity that we'll face, and it's all for the benefit of our students. With that being said, making the connection to student learning, our state assessments are coming up here end of March through April, right, and that's that's important that, that, you know, we see student growth there, and that's something that I've asked Jessica in the teaching and learning department to work with principals and their leadership teams to really ensure that we're implementing each of the site's student learning action plans, where we have strategies to improve reading and math, and make this last month, month and a half push, so that we can get the, you know, see our students reach their potential and show evidence of what they know and what they can do. So that's, that works coming up. We have shared with you all that we're sad that our middle school principal is moving on to another opportunity, and we are just in our beginning phases of using to come up with a process to find our next leader at the middle school, so I'll keep the board apprised and updated on that work as we move forward. You've already mentioned lots of our strong work from our, our students and activities at the end of the winter season, so that's awesome to see, and I think the last piece that I just wanted to make note of is it's, it's capital season. It's time where we need to advocate with our legislators, and we know how much of the decisions that they make at the Capitol impact what we do here, right, especially given the fact that you've heard me talk a lot about us being one of the lowest funded school districts in the state of Minnesota, right? And I think it is a valid, fair question for us to ask our legislators is why our zip code, someone's zip code should determine how many resources are spent towards their education, right? That's, that's a fair question to ask, and we intend to ask that. I'll be up there on Thursday, all day at the Capitol with M A S A N C, and we do have our delegation that we are working to put final touches on to bring a cohort from Princeton on March 13th. You, right now, I have, I think today I should have it by tomorrow, but Emily is checking out a van, so we're seeing how many people we can fit on the van, and that's how many people we intend to take. And I hope to get a nice cross-section of board members, students, teacher, or two, or staff member, parent, but I'd like to just get a nice cross-section if we can. We're going to be somewhat limited to, you know, how many we can fit in the van, which coincidentally is about the same number that you could fit in one of their offices, because that's generally where you meet with them. So it's really hard. You can't bring like 50 people, because you can't all fit in their offices. At this point, I'm pretty proud to say that we have the chairs of most education committees in the Senate and the House. I'll get that confirmed tomorrow, but that's a pretty big win for us, because it's hard to get in those offices. So it's going to be exciting to take our Princeton, what do we call it, our, our no, our legislative platform, boy, our legislative platform, and share that with the legislators. I'll stop my remarks there unless the board has any specific questions that you'd like to ask me.
Any questions for Ben?
The committee that you're forming for the long-range financial facilities, are you going to reach out to board members to be on that, or how are you? I saw it on the Tiger Times, but I didn't know if I should register through that, or?
You know, I think, I think that I would like to have as many board members come as, as possible. I'll just have to see if, if we get, you know, more than three, then I might have to, you know, post it as a meeting, or, you know, just do whatever we need to do to make sure we're compliant there. But yes, I, I think it'd be great if board members could attend that. We have, I think, the last I looked, we had almost 80 people RSVP. So we have, and I sent out another personal invite today to other people that were referred. So the idea here is we're going to have kind of an initial meeting to kind of get big picture of this idea with it, to make the ask of them to commit to multiple meetings for a three- to four-month period, starting in August or September, to bring a recommendation to the board and take a look at both the operating side of things, as well as our facility needs that we have in the district. So, yeah, so far, I think that's going just as I was hoping that it would, and we have a nice, a nice turnout so far.
And that first meeting is the 27th of March?
27th of March, and it's at the middle school in the media center.
Do you want us to just email you?
Ben, could we just go ahead and post that initial meeting on the 27th, so then board members are?
Emily, are you listening to this?
Yeah, I think we should just post it.
Okay, I'll post it. Thank you.
Okay, and just post it, and then if you're going to attend, attend the meeting, email Emily too, and show this kid you're formally on the list, but we'll post it.
Thank you.
Anything else?
I have nothing else.
All right. We will move on then to approve the agenda. Is there a motion to approve the agenda as presented? Second motion's been made by Dawn, seconded by Sue. Any comments or questions on the agenda? Hearing none, all favors say aye. Opposed? All right, agenda is approved. Item seven, discuss and act on previous board meeting minutes. Is there a motion to approve those as presented? Some of, Melissa. Motion's been made by Melissa, seconded by Chad. Any comments or questions? Hearing none, all favors say aye. Opposed? All right, minutes are approved. Item eight, consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented? Motion's been made by Chad, seconded by Melissa. Any comments or questions on those?
Just that on that personnel section, there are a couple retirements, as well as Charlie leaving and wanting to recognize those people for their service to our district and wish them well, and then retirement, and of course, Charlie.
Thank you. Any other comments? All right, hearing none, all favors say aye. Opposed? All right, the consent agenda is approved. Our information item, long-term facility maintenance.
Yeah, so we have three areas we're going to be talking about tonight. The first one is, if you recall, when Ryan from ICS was here and Jody from Ellers, we talked about the ventilation project, which is called an IAQ that can be run under health and safety. We had originally had the high school music area and the kitchen area already on our LTFM, and as we, the cost that started to go from what we thought was about a $200,000 cost to $708,000 just for those two areas. And then when we realized that we could maybe look at doing that project out of the IAQ portion of the levy, we added the lunchroom area, so it would take care of that whole lunchroom, kitchen, and music area. So they have initial estimate, estimate of what that would look like of about 1.1 million. The construction pieces of that would not happen until 2025, and there are still discussions of there's three units, now do we go down to two units? They're looking at what the switch gears, if those are really needed, or do we operate with switch gears we have? And as you can see, the switch gears are 346,000 of the costs. There's a one-year lead time on the switch gear, so we would need to make a decision here by the end of April on whether for the first meeting in May, on whether we were going to move forward with the project, because literally we have to order the switch gears as we come out of the approval in order to, to do the project. Any questions on that?
I think it's, it's important for the board to see the connection between this project and the presentations we have from Jody and Ellers in terms of keeping our depth even, and not have a big drop-off, which will allow the board lots more flexibility in decision-making in the future.
Yeah, and the next step in this, of course, is to take that amount and run that through others to see what is, you know, what estimate they come up with and how it would, you know, play with our levy. So if we go to the next sheet, the one that says, yes, parking lot and bond projects, so we're going to talk about both the parking lots and the bond projects. So when we took out the abatement bond, our I gotta get this so I can see it on the screen. We initially were looking at all of the high school lot there, the front, the side by the pack, and around the back, kind of been redoing all that. We started with the front because it was such an intensive redo for that parking lot. I mean, we, we dug that up pretty good, and we redid infrastructure on there, so if we know that cost is 2.4 million, and we've just got a little bit of punchless items that they will do here with, technically, when it warms up, but it's kind of been warm. So, but when the punchless items get done in the spring, that, that project will finish itself up, and we'll be done paying for that project. So that moves us on to, we have about 1.2 million left in funds that was a part of that original abatement bond, because remember, we didn't do the whole high school lot, so Keith and ICS reviewed the high school east part of the lot, so the, where the pack is, and I don't know what you want to call it, but the bumpout that goes toward the church there. Where we park up to the side, and it's kind of awkward there for how it's positioned, but they are recommending that we do that, because as you know, there's lots of poples in that part of the lot also. This would not be, as of right now, we are not intending to do infrastructure under that portion of the lot. Most of the infrastructure was in the purple lot. That would be our first priority, and the second piece would be the middle school lot. The middle school, if you remember when our previous superintendent was here, Julia Espy, there was a lot of conversation about separating the car traffic from the bus traffic. Now they come in along, they go out through the parking lot, and then they go out through where the buses are coming in. I apologize. It just popped into my mind about a week and a half ago that, oh, we had that. So we started quickly looking at that, and lo and behold, our police chief mentioned that he has been getting phone calls about the traffic that's interfering with our buses, and so that is our second recommendation, is that we look at the middle school lot, so that we can separate those buses and car traffic as we can. And their proposal on the first sheet that I had up, I think was a little over 500,000 for that, their estimate for that project. If we get the green light to move forward with those two parking lots, we would start with the soil borings and engineering contracts.
That's hot. Is that on here somewhere?
Is that the purple? Yeah, they're added together on the sheet, yes. The variance right now is showing that we would still have about 118,000 left, but that, you know, right now, everything is an estimate until it's all prepared, yeah. Then our actual LTFM projects, anything in green is complete or close to complete, we're at punchless items. Anything in purple, we're doing in the spring and the summer. Pink is spring and summer of '25, and light blue is in process. So the green and the light blue, those projects were all approved in our initial process. The high school ventilation project, we separated and talked about that separately, because that was initially on this, this sheet, until the cost ballooned on us, and then if you go down to where we have some pink items, it says the bowling gym wall at the to where we have some pink items, it says the folding gym wall at the intermediate school, the I S gym flooring and the I S gym acoustical panels. As we talked of finance about our um projects, um, we decided to look at spaces instead of doing a folding wall here, a floor in a different building. Let's look at a space and see if we can complete it all. Um, we are recommending the intermediate school gym. The flooring in there is bad. The gym door um folding wall that is in there is from the sixties. It is the oldest in the district. It even beats the high school because that gym was built, I believe, in the eighties sometime. Um, and uh redo the acoustical panels, do the painting and there's a waterfall in there. So there's some plumbing, small plumbing. We are recommending that um we could part of, part of this, actually it was all on the list. Um, we are just recommending that this be the project and it would be split between two summers, twenty, this summer twenty-four, we would do the acoustical panels, painting and plumbing. Uh, mainly because the folding gym wall is nine to ten months out.
I'm actually receiving. They gonna make it or?
Probably. Or we'd have to get custom sizes and stuff to full replacements.
Yeah, um, the, the lead time on some of this stuff for um our facility maintenance is it's long. It's long. I do not remember that being mentioned in the past. Um, and then the fiber cable at the high school um for internet, we are recommending that we replace that. Part of that would be um qualified for federal E rate funding which would take up seventy percent of that project. So only about thirty-four, five would be on us. And we would actually reroute it because right now it kind of runs kind of through the middle of the current high school parking lot. And it lays just in the ground. It's not in anything. So um
And that would also fall under the E rate?
Like, yes.
That we would need it.
Yeah, that's the E rate. Um, and then if you have questions, um, we're still determining whether we would look at the, or at the high school entrance commons area because again, we are still looking at what um we want to do with that high school. If there's a bond project there, we don't really want to put in flooring that might be taken up. Um, but the flooring in, in the commons area, the entryway is in very bad shape at present. And it's mismatched.
Big rust. It's just a big rust.
Um, any questions?
And then I just wanted to note that um we will be redoing the tenure plan that we have to do for um the state of Minnesota. We do it for the levy every summer. I have to do a revision because the state made an error on what they thought we could use as a category in twenty-four for the single use bathrooms. We cannot, we have to break it out into each of the areas, electrical um plumbing hardware. So um, that update will be in our April.
Okay.
Uh, Michelle, just a quick question now because this is under information. First time the board's forward seeing this. Is this something now that will be brought back to them? Uh, for some kind of approval?
Yes.
Do you need approval? So that will be at the next meeting?
Yes.
The board will have between now and next meeting to follow up and ask any questions.
Yes.
Any other questions for Michelle? Alright, we will move on to our first action item. Um, is there a motion to approve the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-five teacher contract as presented? Some of the motions been made by Melissa, seconded by Chad. Um, any comments or questions before we do a roll call vote? Well, alright, we will do a roll call vote then and we'll start with Chad.
Yes.
Melissa?
Yes.
Um, Deb is yes. Dawn?
Yes.
Eric?
I'm gonna abstain.
Okay, Sue?
Yes.
Eric Minks?
Yes.
Alright, motion of, contract is approved. Uh, we will move on to our next action item, which is the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-three transportation agreement.
Twenty thirty?
Twenty thirty. What did I say?
Twenty-three.
You don't want to retro pay. Sorry about that.
No, um, I'm just gonna kind of go through the summary of the contract changes, just so you're aware, the contract that we worked off of was um initially done here in Princeton the summer that I came and went through legal and all of that then. Uh, we also did some insurance changes. Um, a few years later, and that also went through legal to make sure that, and we actually have them at a higher level at the four million. Um, that is in addition to what is required at stat, for statute. There's a two million dollar addition. Um, so we updated the contract um for the things that we talked about. Um, in finance and full, um, they asked about climate weather from the last board meeting when we presented this. Um, because they now also have to pay their staff on in climate weather days. Um, they asked to change that language to ninety percent. We did volley back with eighty and they did not accept that. And so that is at ninety in the contract. Um, we wanted um a sentence that would say that they would always have a dispatch personnel because if you recall at the end of last year and at the beginning of this year, our office was helping to dispatch. I won't say that won't ever happen again because significant, but it's, should be on a daily basis. And I wanted to make sure they didn't have, okay, what happens if they have a license to be on the bus? It's very easy to pull them to make that. So there's no license. They don't have a license to drive a bus. And then um the Transfinder software that we went to um now two years ago, I asked for a sentence there saying that should we part ways that the Transfinder um information stays with the district? And they were all agreeable to that. And then as they uh indicated, um, if you go to the third document, exhibit A, do you notice there's only two boxes filled in? We agreed to a five and a five and a four on the smaller stuff. And then um we have tied all the out years out to the increase that we will get from the state of Minnesota, whether that's two percent, two and a half percent, three percent. I think right now it's between two and three percent. Uh, based on the last legislation and that was a big win for us. It takes kind of the negotiating actually out of the money.
I think all in all, we felt uh felt pretty good about our negotiations on this contract.
And I appreciate the finance committee taking emails and answering. Thank you.
Any questions for Michelle? Alright, uh, is there a motion then to accept the twenty twenty-four, twenty thirty transportation agreement as presented? To move, motion's been made by Sue. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Eric Stramberg. Um, any comments or questions before we vote? And we'll do a roll call vote on this one.
So this is good through twenty thirty?
Six years.
There's a two, for every two years, the district.
You can open it up to negotiate, yeah.
And there's some reason.
Yes.
So if we could open it up or they could open it up or it says we? Sweet.
Any other questions? Alright, we'll start. Uh, Eric Minks?
You got him.
Yeah. Uh, Sue?
Yeah.
Eric?
Yes.
Dawn?
Yes.
Deb, yes. Melissa?
Yes.
And Chad? Alright, contract is approved. Uh, we move on to our last action item. Uh, for the evening, we need to um change the date of our next board meeting because we have more elections going on, on a Tuesday. Um, there is a special election that day and we would not be able to meet until after eight P M. So um Emily went ahead and checked to see what the availability of this room was and it is not available on Monday, um, the eighteenth. So we're looking at um Wednesday, the twentieth, I believe. If that would work for everybody to have that meeting at six on the twentieth.
Does that move? It's not the question. Does that move your policy in this board?
I would assume.
Whatever meeting must be for will be.
Unless you guys want to come in after you. I'm good. I mean, our policies are thrilling, but.
So ma'am, I need a motion to move the second March board meeting date to March twentieth. So I'm going for it. I'll make the motion. Motion's been made by Dawn. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Melissa. Uh, any comments or questions on that? Alright, hearing none, all favors say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Alright, we have a new date for that. And then we have no additions to the agenda. Is there a motion to close the meeting?
Uh, I don't think we have any. We're not going under close.
No, or to end the meeting. Sorry, I used the wrong language. Just to adjourn.
Yeah. Second, we've been going in a lot of closed meetings lately.
Could not be going.
Right.
Motion's been made by Chad, second by one up Dick.
By me.
Second by Sue. Alright, any comments or questions this time? Hearing none, all favors say aye.
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned.